Okay, we'll have a moment of meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renata McClure. Good morning, Renata.
Morning. We have seventeen exoneration for 23,199.50 minutes for October 20th, 2021. Vouchers, General County Fund, 18,236.08, 911, 120.50. Chestnut Ridge Park, 4,003.01.17. Camp Muffley, 10,160.48. Mason Dixon Park, 733.64. Recreation Levy, 3,093.78. Accession valuation, 2,0450. Payroll, 1,005,021.44. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, 5,005.02.92. 911, 5.06.10. Home confinement, 7,148.42. Camp Muffley, 947.71. Mason Dixon Park, 38.72. Assessment valuation, 95.45. For a voucher total of 1,059,450.41. We have budget revisions for state approval for the general fund, for the county clerk, and for law enforcement. We have also for parks and visitors bureau. So do you want to hold off on that one?
Yes.
You're going to remove that one?
Till after we discuss it.
Okay. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for October 27th, 2021.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda except for the parks and visitors bureau.
Still move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any special fiduciary items?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Introduction to new employees, personnel changes. Sheriff Palmer?
He just had one transfer, Commissioner. It was a transfer from part-time to full-time process transport for Eric White.
Okay, not a motion to approve.
Still move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Any other personnel issues? Okay, comments from the public. I'll now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to address the commission can come forward. Full house, but everybody's quiet this morning, so.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the comments from the public. Next item on the agenda is presentation by Mylan Park Foundation regarding the Aquatic Center at Mylan Park. Commissioner Bloom, I believe you want to.
Yeah, I'd like to explain how we got to this moment for this program. Two years ago yesterday, we opened the Mylan Park Community Pool. Three years ago yesterday, we opened up the Mylan Park Track. Nine years ago, in 2012, the county commissioners asked me to meet with Oliver Luck to discuss a new track and swimming facility. In our discussions, I told them that my goal, after the swimming complex was built, would be to offer a learn-how-to-swim program for every elementary student in Montague County. Today, with the support of the Mylan Park Foundation, the Board of Education, and the financial backing of the county commission, I'm proud to announce the formation of the MCMS Project, or Montague County Mini Swimmers Program, that will be developed during the school year. I'll now ask Ron Justice, Mylan Foundation, to explain the program.
Thank you, Commissioner, for having us here, and thank you to the entire commission, not only for this program today, but as Commissioner Bloom mentioned, there's been dialogue and work with the commission all the way back since 2012. And certainly, you know, we greatly appreciate that. But we're very excited today. And obviously, we have all experienced the last year and a half to two years that some things just don't roll out as quickly, given the circumstances. But we have continued to work on this. And I think one of the benefits and, you know, that we're going to talk about today, and I'm just here representing the board, the real people that will be getting it done and doing the program, is Jen Lainhart and Terry Howes from Mylan Park. And certainly, they're the experts in this area. And I would look to them to provide any expertise-type questions that you would have. But I just want to say, on behalf of the Mylan Park Foundation, and I know Susan Tera is one of our board members, and Dr. Campbell and Commissioner Sikora, we just appreciate the support from both the Mon County Commission and Mon County Schools, because, and the CVB. We've had a great partnership from day one. As we put this together, obviously, everyone is aware that our high schools use those facilities, and we're very proud of that. And the fact that we can host regional and state events there on the high school level for swimming and for track and for other sports has been, you know, something that the athletes and the students in our area would have the opportunity to use great facilities and be part of that whole program. What this actually does is expands well beyond the athletic program to the general student population. And as we were looking at this, and I should mention that we have had great support for the facility. And early, early on, even before the facility opened, we had a local foundation that even came to us and said, "We want to support you with some sort of learn-to-swim program, because that's a void that we have in our community." So the Naylor Foundation stepped forward, and Jen worked with them. And we've put together a program where we have 75 scholarships a year that we can use through their funding source to put this forward. Well, fast forward to our discussions. And the goal, which is a very lofty goal, was to try to give the opportunity at some point in time for every child in the school system here and homeschooling to be able to have the opportunity to learn to swim. So we've worked with the county commissioners. I can't say enough for Commissioner Bloom on his commitment, and appreciate your all's work as well in so many different areas. Worked with President Nancy Walker, who has been, you know, just a pillar of support in the community and obviously has been very valuable for this whole community from the Board of Education, obviously Dr. Campbell and his staff. And as we came up with this, what we're trying to focus on is that we would take second graders in all of our county schools and homeschooling and provide an opportunity through a voucher for them to not only learn to swim if they don't know how to swim, but also if they are at a certain level, they could graduate to the next level. So all children in that age group would have the opportunity to learn to swim. In addition, you know, many of us as parents, when we had young children, some parents don't know how to swim as well. So that opportunity in this program will not only be with children, but with the parents. In addition, we're looking at two field trips a year to the whole facility as the school board deems that that would be appropriate. That is in addition to something that we already do, where we do a community night at the pool. Again, COVID has set that back because of our limitations. But what this really does with this support is just enhances what we continue to do for this community and the youth of this community. And we just think that, you know, moving forward, there's nothing that, you know, you don't want to hear about a tragedy happening. And certainly, when you can teach water safety and folks to swim, that helps not just for their time today, but in future generations as they grow up and graduate and move on and have their own family. So it's not just planting a seed for something today, but for the future. The other thing that, you know, our staff can offer up to, and that's the direction of the school board, if they would ever need us to go into a school for in-class learning, we've got the capability to do that and more than willing to do that as part of this program. And I can't, one of the big, big issues in this whole, trying to plan this type of program, was with transportation. And I can't say enough for what the school board has stepped up, or not just stepped up, but continued to support. And that will provide an opportunity that all kids can get to this facility if they don't have the availability to do that. So we'll continue to work the program out. But in short, it is a voucher program that will be given to each child in that grade, distributed through the school system and through our programs. When we bring them there, and we can continue to track and make sure they take advantage of it for them, their parents, the field trips. So we just see it as a wonderful opportunity. And I'll kind of shut up and ask, I don't know if Jen or Terry would like to add anything, but Jen can talk in a more expertise way than I can. Thank you.
I'll be pretty brief, but I've been teaching and coaching swimming for 20 years.
Jennifer, for the record, tell everybody your name.
Oh, my name is Jennifer Lainhart. I'm the director of the Aquatic Center and Track Facility at Mylan Park.
Thank you.
And I've been teaching and coaching swimming for over 20 years. I came from the Northern Virginia area, and I've adopted this area as my home. Just recently bought a house, and I really enjoy living here. And my children go to school here. So I'm very excited to be able to provide this program for kids to learn how to swim. We know that swimming is very important in the safety of children and the prevention of drowning. It's one of the core principles of the American Red Cross that can prevent drowning. And so growing up, learning how to swim, and building a culture of swimming not only helps with that, as well as fitness and their ongoing fitness through their life. So very excited to provide that. Second grade is a good time. They say that if a child does not learn before they're nine, they are more likely to never learn how to swim. So it's very important to get them early and get those core skills. One of the things we're asked to provide is not only introductory courses, but for children who have maybe already learned some skills, they can continue to grow their skills and hopefully turn into larger high school swimming teams and, you know, growing the sport of swimming and diving in Montague County. I really liked the opportunity as well to include parents, because parents who know how to swim can help teach their children good water safety practices. I love it when children say to me, "I saw my dad or mom on a boat, and I told them, 'You need to put your life jacket on.'" That's a very important thing, especially where we are with lakes and rivers, wearing a life jacket and keeping children safe. As well as access to the facility, there are some people still that maybe don't have access or don't think that they can afford access. And so the field trips will provide a chance for students who maybe don't already have access to the facility, a free chance to come through their schools and enjoy the facility, the track and the aquatic facility. Thank you guys very much for providing the opportunity. We're looking forward to serving the community with the program.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. If possible, could we also have Dr. Ed Campbell and Nancy Walker, Superintendent of Mon County Schools and President of the Mon County Board of Education? This could not have been done without your support, and I want the public to realize that. You stepped up, and we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And we want to thank everybody who's been involved in giving our kids the opportunity that they're going to have to enjoy the facility at Mylan Park. It's such an important part of our school system, that partnership that we have with Mylan Park. Our baseball and softball teams use it, our track team uses it, our swim teams use it. Now we're going to get to extend that even further down into our elementary schools. We had a board meeting last night, and Mrs. Walker had requested that we kind of talk about mathematics. And, you know, sometimes I have to take a step back and remember that, you know, we are in the business of teaching math and English in the schools. I often say something, you know, with all the things that we're asked to do in education today, that every once in a while, we get to teach a little math and English. But we had a great presentation last night from our math folks. One of the things that some of the board members talked about was, you know, in our high schools, our kids aren't doing quite as well as what we'd like to see them do in math. And one of our other board members really spoke up and mentioned, "If you think about it, our juniors, our 11th graders right now, the last full year of education that they've had came when they were in eighth grade." And I thought about that this morning again, and I thought, you know, I'm going to take that a step further. We had two teacher strikes prior to the pandemic. The last full year of school that our 11th graders have had was in sixth grade.
Wow.
We've kind of really rethought the concept of education, and it's caused us, the pandemic has caused us to rethink education. Five years ago, we used to talk about, as educators, a term called "mission creep." And what it is, is that, you know, in the school system, what's your mission? Your mission's to educate. Your mission's to teach math and reading and science and social studies and teach kids how to write. That's always the traditional idea behind what education is all about. Well, we've had to rethink that. We're asked to do a lot, lot more for kids these days. We feed kids, we clothe kids, we help kids find housing. So mission, the idea of mission creep is gone. Our mission now is to provide students with all types of services. And this Board of Education has made a true commitment to that in the decisions that they've made over the last several years, in making sure that we are capable of providing services to our students that will assist them in all walks of life beyond just the classroom. And I think this project is an example and an extension of what we need to do for our children. To be able to provide them with this opportunity to be exposed to water safety is just an incredible opportunity for them in their lives, something that many of these kids may not have the opportunity to do. So we're very appreciative of the opportunity. We thank the commission. We continue to thank Mylan Park for our partnership, the CVB for their involvement in this. This is really going to be a tremendous, tremendous thing for our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Walker wants to make a couple of comments, or no?
Well, just on behalf of our students and families, I think we all need to recognize the collaboration that this is between a nonprofit entity, between the county commission with the CVB, and between the school system. I do want to assure everyone, we're not going to be driving every second grader to the park to swim for weeks and weeks and missing our math and English that we're constantly working on. But I do want to say, we are the repository of a large majority of folks in Montague County. There's over 30,000 people really affected by what goes on in the schools. And this is going to be a great opportunity. The one thing I haven't heard anyone say is fun. This is going to be fun. This is going to be a nice, fun activity for students and families as we coordinate to work with this swimming program. So thank you very much for being willing to collaborate with us. I thank the park for their collaboration, and this is really what Montague County's all about. So thank you very much.
Thank you, President Walker.
Thank you.
I'd also like to read a statement from the Montague County AFT Local President, San Bernadette, who heard what we were doing. And it quote, "This sounds like a wonderful opportunity for our young students and their families. This program will not only be fun, it also promotes student health and fitness. Most importantly, it affords these children what could be lifesaving techniques and water safety. It's a win-win-win." And finally, this will be the first of its kind program in the state. It also shows the commitment of the county commission to have these first-class facilities used for our community. And this is one thing I want the community to understand. Not one taxpayer dollar was used in the bricks and mortar of the swimming complex or the track at Mylan Park. And in fact, this program will be funded through the hotel motel tax. I do want to recognize, though, one individual who has been extremely helpful in this project and has been there when I met the first day with Oliver Luck. And I appreciate Ms. Terry House's stand-up to be recognized. I know you do not want this, but I think the public needs to know that your former position as the Associate Athletic Director of WVU and currently the Executive Director of Mylan Park, because of your support, the community not only has an amazing working relationship with the commission, but you also were out there when we were fighting for the track. And you didn't want the pool without the track. And I want to thank you, and the public needed to know that. So thank you very much. I also want to thank Mark Nestlero, who helped spearhead this endeavor during the past year, and to my colleagues from the county commission, who continue to help us move forward to improve the quality of life and help promote healthy lifestyles for our children. Thank you. And we'll discuss this motion later.
I'm sorry, Ron.
Go ahead. And I just want to add one other thing that's non-related to this topic, but I know it's important to the commission. So Dr. Campbell was mentioning math. And so yesterday, and I think it's being installed today, as you all recall, in the track season, you can't do a lot of the field games, especially like pole vaulting and things like that in the winter months and outside. And so, and we had some discussion about, hey, we need to make those facilities available and open, you know, to the students that use those and to build on it. So one bit of, just as we continue to unfold these things, that you don't even realize what we have there, that we can accommodate folks. But so yesterday, they were putting in the indoor pole vaulting pits there at the Ruby Center. And we have one of our coaches that has agreed to work with not just students at the high school level, but all students or anyone that would be interested. And it was the most complicated math project to try to get that set right. So I just walked away from it and said, "You all have to figure the geometry of this thing out." But the good news here, in a couple of weeks, we'll have that availability. And I know Jen worked with that. And I know that was an issue that we talked about back in the spring, maybe, about being able to open up more facilities like this that students can use and be able to have it. So we'll have an indoor pole vaulting club and opportunity inside the Ruby Center. So that will go year-round as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, well, we're going to talk more about this opportunity later in the agenda. So moving on, Sheriff Perry Palmer, presentation of a list of properties to be suspended from the sheriff's tax sale, which is to be held Monday, November 8th, 2021.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. We're now presenting you with a list of properties that will be suspended from the 2020 tax lien sale.
Thank you.
As Commissioner Sikora said, the sale will be held on the 8th at 9:00 a.m. right here at the county commission chambers. The last day to pay is going to be Friday, November 5th, 5:00 p.m. Online payments are included. And Kelly can go down a quick list of the suspend.
So the properties that you have listed there, they're all broken out. My staff prepared that packet for you. Fifty-six tickets are being suspended due to bankruptcy. Fifty-two previously certified to the auditor. Three condemnations. 593 interest in minerals only. One questionable deed and two for pending litigation. For a total of 707 properties to be suspended.
Move approval to suspend?
Second.
I think the motion would be to accept the list provided by the sheriff.
Oh, accept the list, okay.
Okay, so the amended motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Kelly, thank you very much for your due diligence in pulling this together. As always, it's very thorough and thoughtful. And Sheriff, thank you on behalf of all your tax staff. So having a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. And just if we could have a reminder that Friday, November 5th, is the last day to pay. Right now, we have about 800, and once these are suspended, we have about 850 properties to be sold, which at this point is about two-thirds of what we normally have. So those postcards are working, those reminders. And I think people are just more likely to pay their taxes now. So we appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleen Kuhn, grants?
I have two grant awards that I need you to sign. The first one is for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, and it is in the amount of $108,000. And the second one is another Emergency Management Performance Grant, but this is a COVID-19 supplement award, and that's in the amount of $12,500.
Okay, not a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, correspondence?
Well, I just have a couple of pieces. First of all, the Boat Park Levy Report for the first quarter, which will be July through September, for the 2020 levy that was passed. Fiscal year 2021 Annual Tax Increment Financing Report, as required by the Department of.
Development.
Development Office. I'm sorry, West Virginia Development Office. And then also, we received a notice from the West Virginia Department of Homeland Security, Division of Administrative Services regarding the jail per diem rate increase to 53, 54.13, starting July 1.
54.25?
54.13.
Okay, I got a different number. Okay, this was 48.25?
It was 48.25.
Maybe that's where my confusion was. Yeah, just for the record, this is, we have discussed this last year. The state was going to implement this increase after we had already approved our budget. So they put a moratorium on it. So it will go into effect fiscal year '23, and this represents a 12% increase in our jail bill. So based off our current jail bill, it could be anywhere from a $216,000 to a $280,000 increase, based off our current jail projections. So this is nothing to take lightly, and we will take it into account as we're going through our budget sessions. Anything else, Renata?
No, that's all.
Commissioner Bloom, you have any other missing correspondence? Commissioner Arnott?
No, for me.
Okay, I don't have any either. Okay, unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration to Initiate Publication Process and Declare intent to Approve Adjusted Montague County Magisterial District Boundary Lines. I believe a motion to.
Yeah, move to table this until we've had another meeting.
Second.
With our clerk.
Any discussion?
We just need some more.
Basically, we had met with the clerk's office and her staff on Monday, and they were going, based on some questions we were asking just in regards to, you know, this is the first time any of us have been through this. So we were asking, we're going to meet again with the clerk's office next Monday and as a follow-up to really kind of answer the questions. And then they were to weaken a couple anomalies in the map. So really, no news is still good news. We should be proceeding, hopefully, next week. To Consider for Approval Requisition Number Four for the Morgantown Industrial.
We need to vote on that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sorry about that. Consider for Approval Requisition Number Four for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2021 A Phase III Project Fund?
Requisition is for $767,820.35. Sorry, Tom.
I was going to say move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. And discussions, as Renata was indicating, is $767,000. $41,000 goes to March Western for Construction Management, $580 to Press and Contractors for excavation and pad development, and then another $146,000 with Thrasher Group for engineering. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration to Approve a Proposed Budget for Fund 207, which is our American Rescue Plan Act 2021.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. From a discussion standpoint, this budget is based off the current funds that we have in-house that we've received, which is $10,256,946. Eight hundred, eight million, 8.5 million of that goes to, is projected for water and sewage projects. Capital outlays for initial infrastructure for broadband is $1.4 million. Supplies is $1,000, and contracted services is $355,000. And that's for the Ismaila Whitboard work, plus some additional follow-on work for right-of-way acquisition. So this is just predicated on the half. So we plan, we've indicated what we so far have planned for the half. Anything else?
No.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, to Consider for Approval Requisition Number 52 for the University Town Center Administrative Expense Fund.
Still move.
Second.
Requisition is for $3,593.75, and that's for an invoice that MUNICAP submitted regarding some of their financial analysis that they completed for the district.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item. Consideration to Approve a Letter of Support for the Mylan Pushcar Health Rights, Living in Good Health Together Program. in Good Health Together Program.
Move for approval.
Second, any discussion?
Just that this is in support of the harm reduction program that unfortunately has been so limited by the State Department that we're one of the few that'll still be able to do it.
Yeah, and it's a requirement of the new state law, so they have to get this approval from us and the city, I believe, so. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consideration to approve funding to Mylan Park Foundation for initiation of a Mon County Mini Swimmers Program?
Move that we approve funding to Mylan Foundation for $300,000 for programming.
Second, okay, discussion?
I've said my piece. You don't want to hear me anymore.
Well, you guys.
That may be the first time you've ever heard.
First time Tom ever says, pass. No, I think I don't, there's not really much we can say that hasn't already been said. The Commission, specifically Commissioner Bloom, has been working on this for a long time. As a matter of fact, this is Commissioner Bloom's vision whenever the Aquatic Center came into existence, and he's been a driving force ever since. So, as you all know, when Tom works on something, he sees it through to the end, and, you know, I want to really commend Tom's work on this, because he's really gone in above and beyond and not accepting the old standard of, well, we can't do this, you know, instead of asking the questions, why? So, the Commission's involvement in the Aquatic Track Center is predicated on community involvement, and this is community involvement. So, I wholeheartedly support this funding effort. I do want to note that for this year, for the Learning the Swim Program, 200 is being provided, set aside for this program specifically, and it's our, we have to obviously go into each budget cycle, but it's our intent to approve 200 for the next three years going forward. The reason for the 300 this year is we've also provided another $100,000 for programs at the Aquatic Track Center, specifically to really try to jump-start the facility, and we're kind of back where we started. You know, we had delay in opening the center, and they were open for like a month, and then we had COVID hit, so we're really kind of restarting, restarting the program. So, we asked staff, Jennifer, we've been really watching the budget and stretching every penny we could, but at the same time, we're asking them for new and inventive programs that can help to increase the membership. The Learn to Swim program will be a huge benefit to that, but some other programs that staff has come up with, there's an F-45 program with NEUS, and health enthusiasts, look up, it's very, due to our partnership with centers, we're able to get that at a very, very reduced rate and offer that to our members. So, Jennifer, this is the first year hearing of it. Obviously, you guys, you guys submitted it to Juma. Juma was in favor, but we didn't have the funding for it, because, again, we can't, it's kind of, Jennifer's been in a catch-22, we're like, hey, don't spend any money, but, you know, do things to bring people in. So, this is kind of a special incentive infusion that we want, we've approved this project. And there's some other, there's some other necessities that's needed by the track community for the track for next season, that the track community had come forward and said, yes, this works great, but we still need this, and we still need that. So, there, we've also approved, in that, we're giving $50,000 for some of those purchases. Now, those will ultimately have to be approved by the Juma. The Juma will provide direction as far as those fundings, but it's the Commission's intent that those dollars be spent on those particular projects. And again, just infusions to try to, try to help the Aquatic Center get to where we thought it was going to be when it first opened, so I'm very excited about being able to provide these dollars. And as, well, I'll go on to, I have something else to say, but I'll go when we go to the next action item. Do we have anything else?
No, just to, it's a good opportunity for us to get out there, the center's open, and it's not owned by the university, it's not owned by the county, it's not, it's, anyone in Mon County can go out there and use the facility. And I think with COVID, we haven't been able to get the word out as much as we would normally, so I'm excited that we can get the whole community out there using the center, and it's a fantastic facility, and it's open for business, so come on out.
Okay. Sorry, I'm skipping around here. All right, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'm going to get to the end of the new business, and then I'll go back up to the other budget item. Okay. Okay, the next item is consideration to advertise for a park superintendent position for the Monongate County Parks and Recreation Department. Do I have a motion?
Show move, second.
Okay, any discussion? Basically, an open, open position for, to be a superintendent at one of our parks, and we want to get this thing posted as soon as possible, so. We have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, back to the original consent agenda, and I want to specifically address two budget, well, they're in one action, but the parks budget, 900, the Visitors Bureau budget, 911, and contingency, 699. So, basically, what we're doing is due to projections for hotel motel revenue, we're increasing our budget for part, for us, Convention and Visitor Bureau, hotel occupancy tax, there it is, from 600,000 to a million, so that creates another 400,000. Susan, 200 of that, obviously, by statute goes to your organization, so we've increased your budget by 200, from 300 to 500. The other 200 is for part of this funding for the Mylan Park. And then, in addition, we're decreasing contingency expense account by 100,000, and so the overall actions is we're going to revise the revenue from 400, by 400, from 600 to a million, in account 309, decrease contingency expense, count 699, 600, by 100,000, increase park expense account, 900, 9568-19, by 300K, and then increase CVB expense account by 911s, 568, by 200K. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Show move.
Second.
A first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, takes care of that agenda item.
Just to note, though, that the parks budget, that, just that particular line item is the line item for the Aquatic Center.
Yes, that's what I mentioned, the object expenditure 19.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have reports from elected officials and our department supervisors? Okay, seeing none. Reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Nope, we've covered it.
I just want to say, and I know I'm on tape, but I want to say very clearly, I want to thank the Board of Education. We could not have done that without them, and I really look forward to working with you, and that's on tape.
Thank you. Since last, since last meeting, last Thursday, we had a Mylan Park Board meeting. At the same time, we had, it was double booked, I had the Morgantown Comprehensive Plan meeting. It was a very, very interesting conversation, and I'm looking forward to working with that group. I also had a sync call, I'm sorry, losing track here. Mylan Park Board meeting, met with Morgantown Comprehensive Plan, and then at night, we had our MMPO meeting. Friday, we had staff reports, broadband right-of-way discussions, and then a discussion with our developer, Westridge. Saturday, I want to say that I kind of traversed the state. I went to Wesleyan Football Game, and then after that, I went to Charleston and to watch the West Virginia Marching Band Invitational, and I want to say that Morgantown High was the northernmost team, and their percussion group went down. The whole band didn't participate, percussion group went down. And out of 16 percussion groups, they finished second, and from people I didn't even know that were in the stands, it was obvious that that was a huge amount of home cooking. Morgantown certainly deserved to be first. It wasn't even comparable, but the team, the percussion team that did win first was the overall grand champion, and I give them credit. It was Cabal Midland, and they, I mean, they were incredible, but their percussion session couldn't hold a candle to Morgantown High. I just want to lodge that, lodge that complaint with the West Virginia Cultural Center, who puts on the competition. This week, Monday, we had our special work session with the clerk. It was a good discussion, a lot of questions, it was interesting, it's an interesting process, to say the, to say the least. In the afternoon, I had a sync call with our broadband consultants, and then I also had an economic development call with another broadband-related opportunity for Mon County. Today's a regular day of meetings and full work sessions. Tomorrow is a Mon County Health Department, I just wanted to let you know that from 2 to 5, they're having a get-together for Kathy Karen, who's retiring, so at the Health Department from 2 to 4. Staff reports on Friday, broadband initiative, full team meeting, and I'm sure foremost on the Board of Education's Mines Mohawk Bowl, so.
It's a pouring rain.
Well, and I'm sure it's going to be packed regardless, so I'm sure the Board and Eddie, you're going to be very busy with all of, with all of that. On a personal note, I recertified as a PMP yesterday, which is a project management professional. It's a very rigorous process, and in addition, with 5,000 other things we have going on, I had to get that done by yesterday. So, I do want to thank Mylan Park Foundation, Mark Nestle Road, Ron, Terry, your guys' work in really driving this thing home, President Walker, you, your board, Superintendent Campbell, all the work that you guys done to make this program a reality. Jennifer, you're, you have a lot of experience, and I'm looking forward to your leadership in initiating this program. And of course, thank you, Tom, for all your efforts, and also, see Jeff, thanks us for, I appreciate that we can really be involved in this. I want to thank the Health Department for the, we did our flu drive on Monday. Thanks to our staff for organizing that, and the Health Department comes here once a year and provides flu shots, so it's a convenience for our employees, and I believe this year, they provided booster shots, so, for COVID. So, I really thank them for making time available with everything else they got on to, to do that, provide that annual service. And last, I do want to thank Kathy Karen, who has worked for our Health Department for over 20 years, and she's retiring. I'm not really sure what it's going to be like to not see Kathy's smiling face at the Health Department every time I go over there, so I really thank, thank her for her service to the county. If you haven't taken the survey, please, monfiber.survisezones.net, please take our broadband survey, and please follow your three W's, wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear your mask. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Adjourn.